Order and stand for the pledge if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Hillary Song? Sorry. We are meeting, you're on for right now in the PMNR CD. If I, I'll let you do it because I know it's Polley Meadowing, but then we lose it.
That's right. Uh, Polley Meadowing Natural Resources Conservation District. Hillary Solomon here. So I have a project proposal to put forth to you and this is part, this is kind of part two of a, of a meeting that I attended, it might have been about a year ago where we had our initial project results from the stormwater master plan, the Polley River Stormwater Master Plan, and there were quite a few really good ones that we identified in Fairhaven and it sounded like the town and the select board were pretty enthusiastic about those projects. So as you know, we've been moving forward with Act 76 and we have two members actually from Fairhaven on the Basin Water Quality Council. We have funding, the Clean Water Service Provider has funding, it's clean water funding, it's to do phosphorus reduction projects, to reduce phosphorus to Lake Champlain. This is because of the lawsuit brought by the Environmental Protection Agency against the state of Vermont a number of years ago because they didn't feel that Vermont was doing enough to clean up Lake Champlain. So now we have clean water funding, we're trying to implement projects. We just received our grant, our grant, it was just signed, I think a couple of weeks ago. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission signed it, they're the ones who are handling the funding. And now we're looking for projects. Because of the nature of the, of the grant, the projects have to be inexpensive per pound phosphorus, the cost per pound phosphorus reduced needs to be quite low. And that sort of has to do with the modeling that went into the determination of how the state was supposed to fix this phosphorus problem in Lake Champlain. So one of the projects that was in this stormwater master plan that I presented to you whenever that was, I feel like it was about this time last year, is a project that takes place right across the road from here in the town green. And it's, it had a really, really high total phosphorus reduction. It's a very efficient project. So I have some handouts. I have one that's a sort of a larger packet that shows, it's got a map and it has some pictures. I don't want the pictures to scare you because they're not, they're out of keeping of the scale of this project. So in the picture there are like little tiny humans at the bottom of this giant stack of black cells. This is not the same scale that we're talking about at all, it's just sort of an example of what the technology might look like. So I'll pass that around and then I have the page two here, this is a little bit just more complete of a packet. But page two here is the same and I'll give, I think I have enough for at least almost everybody to have one of these, which is the project design. So this is an initial project design, it came out of the stormwater master plan that we finished last year. And maybe Erin, if we can get this to you at the end, that would be, that would be great. So there's the bigger packet and there's the first deal. So we, I, we, I put in a grant to just get a final design on this so we could get a little bit more information. So that's where we are now, is trying to get a little bit more, you know, specific information about this project, what the exact cost would be, what the exact size of it would be and what the exact phosphorus reduction would be. Right now, we have about 200 projects that we've identified over the past five years and all of them are stormwater projects like this one. When we got our formula for the Clean Water Service Provider, it only includes 11% of funding for projects in developed lands. And they have a set price range for each type of project. So the developed lands projects are the most expensive because they're expensive to implement. Whereas like forestry project would be the least expensive because of the makeup of our watershed. They have most of our funding in that category, forestry projects, about half of it's in that category. So that means our overall cost per pound of phosphorus that we need to, that we need to reduce is very, very low. It's the lowest of all the other, of all the Clean Water Service Providers, which is going to be a problem for us. So this project reduces a lot of pounds of phosphorus. It helps us meet a big portion of our target that we're trying to meet. It is expensive, like the total project cost is expensive, it's the most, I, I work on these projects, I've been working on these projects for a number of years now and most of our projects are pretty inexpensive. They're like $5,000 to $30,000 for a project, you know. A $6,000 to $12,000 project is pretty normal for us. So when you look at the scale of projects, so we have $700,000 to spend in the watershed each year for the next five years. Doing $6,000 projects just means you have so many projects to do and we don't quite know how we're going to come up with the capacity to manage all those projects. So this project is expensive. It's our first year of, it would be our first year of spending if we're able to do it next year, which we don't know. I mean, I'm not even sort of asking about that, but I just want everybody to think about it maybe. So in a way it would sort of help to spend some of those funds and it's a really efficient project. It would reduce a lot of pounds of phosphorus and it's underneath the limit for this type of project. So the dollars per pound of phosphorus for this type of project are, is about $11,000 and this one comes in about $9,000. So it's a, it's underneath the sort of state average for costs for this type of project. So I think it's a really good project. You would know more about the potential constraints, given that it's in the town green here. You shouldn't be able to see it. Once it's installed, it'll be completely underground, but of course there might be utilities or there might be some, you know, there might be things we need to work around. So I guess I'm presenting it to you. I want to make sure you're really familiar with it. I want to make sure that you think it's a good idea that we move forward with the design because we, we did get the grant to do the design, it's outside of the formula funds because we wanted to use other funds to try and keep costs down in the formula grant, they're still state funds. So I guess I just want to make sure we're all clear and just see, kind of see if you're supportive and sort of see what, what the feedback would be from the select board because ideally we would all be on the same page.
How does it work and what's, and how does, how does it work, I guess is the best way to start.
In terms of how this would move forward?
No, I mean, the actual project, what, what does it do?
Oh, like how does it, oh, okay. So the most important thing I think is to look, there's a little inset on the left side. It has a little red line outlining like sort of the blocks north of here. So that's the watershed. So that, those stormwater drains pick up stormwater in that whole neighborhood and they bring it to a point that's right outside of this town office. So what they're, what they're proposing to do is that we take all that flow and we build something in the town green, like underneath the town green and we, all that water goes through that structure that's a sort of ax to clean out the nutrients. And then the clean water or cleaner water would go back into the storm drain. You know, it's kind of like, like a pond, that you have a stream coming and the water goes into the pond and then back into the stream. That it would do that, so water from this whole storm drain system, which isn't treated at all, dumps right into the river, would go through this cleansing system and then go back into the storm drain, then it would go into the river. So hopefully it would be quite a bit cleaner. So, and those are, so there'd be a swirl separator at first to remove any of the sort of larger particles and then there would be this treatment system. And I've never actually seen one of these in person, but we could have somebody come down, like if you're interested in exactly how it works, we could have somebody come down who installs these or who oversees these and they could give more information.
Is this, is everything underground including a swirl separator or?
Supposed to be all underground, yeah.
It's just like a manhole?
Right, right.
It's for long-term maintenance or something like this?
So that is a question I do not know the answer to very well. I don't know, have you guys, has anybody, have you worked with a swirl separator before?
I haven't.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. So I think this swirl separator occasionally would get like backed out, like a draft inlet in a storm drain. But I don't know about those, those black container things that are in the picture, I don't know how those get cleaned out. I could find that out. And that might be part of the design of this, because we don't have a design, it's just a concept right now. So it might be part of the design or even, I mean, I could just ask too, somebody who knows more than I do about this, what the maintenance is for these. So the, along with this funding are operations and maintenance funds, funds. So the same, the Clean Water Service Provider will have these funds. So these projects come with funding for the next, for the foreseeable future at least, to maintain them.
Which, which would be how many years for sure?
So probably for the, what they've been saying that they're limiting the operations and maintenance. So you've signed an agreement with, it would be with the CLISP, so with Rutland Regional, so Polley Meadowing and Rutland Regional Planning Commissioner are kind of partners on this CLISP, but the funding's going through them, so anyhow, I think they would be signing it with you, is for 15 years. And then after that, I think the whole, the system gets reevaluated and if it's working, great, you could sign another one. I think at that point the, it's up to the town, I think at that point if they want to sign another one. But for the amount of funding, if it's working, probably, I'm assuming the town would.
So when you came in the first time, we talked about this and we talked about it wasn't going to cost the town any money? And so, and so, when, when you were talking about that, you get 11% funding for some kind of grant and then you're, it's a $10,000, what's the, what's the cost with them?
There shouldn't be any cost to the town aside from like, I don't think there'd be any cost to the town unless you decide, oh, we're going to back it and we're not going to charge because it took us two seconds and we were doing this anyhow down the street. But that's up to you. There's no exposure to the town. The, I think, the things that are changing a little bit are the operations and maintenance agreements. They're getting a little stricter with the state, so you might want to review that language before you sign on and that language hasn't been finalized yet. But I don't know that that would be a problem because you guys are a public entity and it's town land, so there shouldn't be too much conflict there. But yeah, the whole cost would be paid for through this grant. And then, you know, operations and maintenance are supposed to be paid for too. And we, apparently the, we're supposed to get a contract in the next couple of days for our first year of operations and maintenance funding. So it does feel like that is moving forward. It's a part of the Act 76 rule. Because the state had, you know, implemented rain gardens and a really good example is the one behind Polley High School. And they get all weedy and messy and nobody has any funding to do anything about it and so then nobody wants to install any more projects. So the state recognized that and so they've decided they're going to help fund some of the maintenance on these projects that they've paid for.
I think the problem I've got with this whole thing is you run up there and you get a grant and you just look for projects to spend the money on. I don't think, I, I was so against digging up the back end of that park last year. I think it was so ridiculous. There was never any water in that park.
Right, that's, that's exactly right.
And you go run out here and you get grant money and then you run around and try to get projects for people to sign on to and spend the money. I personally, I'm totally against it though.
So just so you know.
Why? I don't get, I don't get why.
It's crazy. It's crazy. Where everyone ended up doing all maintenance on this stuff, because everyone here is supposed to, they're supposed to take care of the maintenance.
But we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have.
You're dealing with the state.
Okay, so then we'll, let's make believe we're not in the state. Jesus, you know, look at what it'll do. I mean, it's going to take, look at, if you just take that outline of where the red, red is, it's going to take all that drainage, it's going to modernize the drainage for us and in the meantime, it's going to clean some of the phosphorus out of it.
The drainage from the other end of the street.
It's already there.
It goes to the river.
It goes to the river.
It doesn't come up, it's under the park.
So I just, could I point out something here? So the reason we want to use that spot is because it is dry. So we're taking water that's being collected in the streets here and we're, we're using that spot because it is dry. We aren't saying we're treating water in that spot.
It goes down the hill to the river now.
Right, but we're, it's in a pipe, right, and it's under the ground.
It goes down the hill.
They're using this, they want to use this area Jay for a big filtering.
I understand that, but how even the water?
It's all from the north side.
It comes from the north side up here, the high stone.
It's already in a pipe and so we're taking the water in the pipe already and we're putting it in that area and then putting it back in the pipe to go to the river.
My, when we talked about it originally, my, my thought was, I've been hearing for at least four years since I've been on the board about concern about water runoff when it leaves on West Park Place and goes towards the river through some of our taxpayers' properties. And so I'm saying any, if, if this would take some of that, clean it up and then send it down to the river, is there any chance that that situation along with our parking ride and our, the way we're going to be handling wastewater there, is that going to help us? Two different things we're doing that should improve some of the wastewater runoff. And, and I know you're talking and you're, this tank to take and eliminate, there's probably, the science is way above my head, but it's probably the settling out some phosphorus and everything in, in the tank and sending cleaner water to, is the theory, I, to get it to the river. And I'm, and I'm just looking, saying, all for cleaner water going in the river. And if it helps some of the, the concerns we have on this side, West Park Place with, with our storm water and everything going down there, probably not bad then because we're doing stormwater on the other side of the park going down through town.
There were three different projects that we identified around the park and one was definitely directly related to that project. That was a smaller project, so it's just a little further down. This was kind of our best project that we identified. And my job is to, just so you know, is to identify these projects and try and evaluate them and prioritize them.
I'm not going to dig them up for park, I'm sorry.
And, well, I, I come back to my other question on the park. When I look at this sketch, is the, this, the square shaded box I see in the middle of the page, is that, and I saw where the test holes were done, is that staying, when we go in to put this in, will we need to take and move some of the fence and then put the fence back? That's, that's the one that I think might get some, some emotion.
I think that, so I, and I apologize because some of the reason I don't use more concrete language is just that I know that a lot of changes happen during projects, so I don't want to promise something, I can't back up. But my understanding is that that was all within the confines of things in the park. So there were pathways and different things that we were trying not to disturb. But that final footprint would be part of the design project, which is the next step. And the, that, we could, we could actually solidify that answer or say, we cannot disturb.
The park fence, because it looks like there's room if you had.
It really looks to me like it's outside the park fence, but it's anywhere, it's not by very much in this corner over here. Yeah, well, that could be, that could be tweaked or.
I was just going to say we can move, move the whole thing, I think there's, I think there's room.
Something like that could be worked out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how, how perfectly exact that rectangle is. That, again, that would be sort of finalized in the next iteration.
This project can take place in the summer times, so the park can be tore up all summer.
What else are you going to do?
No.
I mean, sometimes progress means you make a hole.
It's.
Yep, so all it is, is a project to spend money, that's all it is.
Well, I, I just want to say that.
Proctor, Polley Meadowing's done this for years and years and years.
The, the money is there, it is allocated by the state and the feds. It's already there.
We can't get money to take care of our roads, we can't get money to take care of.
That's a whole different thing, Jay.
Well, they can find money for nothing else, but they can't find money to do.
You're talking to the wrong people, but this is a specific project. It's not, it doesn't have to do with an overall view of state government.
So it's the end of my conversation, so.
Okay. What do we need to do tonight? What do you need from us tonight?
I guess I would.
Obviously a yea or a nay of.
Yeah, I feel like, so I did put in, because there was a deadline, an application, which is to a block grant from the state to, to do, to do the design. We did get that funding. I would like to, I would not want to proceed with it if the town wasn't on board. So I guess a vote on whether we should proceed with the design would be helpful. And then if, if you agree that we should do that, then I can start that process. And then I guess from you also, what kind of check-ins would you like? Like where would the town want to be involved in the design process and sort of wanting to make sure that we're meeting, you know, the needs of the town and just keeping everybody informed?
Okay, jumping, the, the only thing, when, when I think of check-ins going forward here, if we were to go forward, we have, this is the same area we do the farmer's market. So we, timing wise, we'd want to get out in front of it and let them know that we do the farmer's market while this was going on. My, my question, that, once we build this here, is the thought process grass back over the top of it so the farmer's market can then still, or is it, is it going to be where, in the past, going back quite a few years, even though there was a little mini carnival and some rides were there, is this structure when it goes in, can we, is it something you have to stay off the top of?
So I will, I'm going to confirm that with somebody before I answer it, but my understanding is that it would be grass and that you would be able to use it. I was going to say they put a lot of these under parking lots, but of course that, then the asphalt kind of protects it from compaction. So I'll just make sure that you could still drive on it, you could still put like a carnival, little carnival ride or something on top of it. And see, kind of, kind of.
Well, that was, that was another question that I'm thinking, is we always have a parking issue? Could, could there be, could, could that be, could the parking be on that and not hurt what you're doing? Spaces.
The one, the one thing I would, I would say is a vote would mean we'd have to have an agenda change. So we'd need to do that.
Yeah, and my understanding is, I think when you came, was there, there was a different board, the makeup of the board is different than the one that said, hey. The one, the board, I sat on that board and, and I'm just as excited today as I was then saying, it looks like this is the right thing to do and it addresses some of the problems we had. I hear, I hear you Jay, that I don't want to do anything that's going to take and detract a lot away from our park that we're pretty proud of down there, so.
But what are the problems we've had in the past here? That's, I guess, the warrant this.
Oh, so the, the, it's the water quality in Lake Champlain. So of course Vermont has a economy that's based on tourism and Lake Champlain is a major draw to Vermont. And now we're having problems with cyanobacteria blooms in Lake Champlain that are fed by phosphorus. So we've been installing these stormwater systems where we collect water off the roads in towns and we basically put that untreated into our rivers.
What about, what about when Burlington opens up the gates and lets raw sewage goes in?
That is a great example of raw sewage going in. So the wastewater treatment plants contribute, those overflows contribute about 3% of our phosphorus problem in Lake Champlain and the development is another, you know, percent, you guys have heard about agriculture being a percent. So yeah, those are all issues that we're trying to work on. So this is a way where we can treat stormwater that's collected off the roads and right now receives no treatment, it goes directly to the river, this allows it to be treated before that happens.
I don't know, I went to a state or a science pub meeting last weekend and that was one of the conversations, the water in Champlain. You guys really should get together because they seem to think the water in Champlain isn't that bad.
Yeah, I don't know who that was presenting that.
Up in Brandon, they had a science pub, there, there's a good engineer from the water, from water, that's all he talked about, was water. They didn't seem to have a problem with.
Well, the feds do. And I, I mean, I, my way of thinking is we're, it's our contribution without having, having to actually spend that with a lot of money or any money. And we're collecting a whole bunch of phosphorus. You think about, just look at that red line, where that's coming from and that's all, all, all here. All the lawns that are, that are seeping off whatever fertilizer comes off the lawn and it comes and collects there and we get some of that out of there instead of, instead of dumping it into the Polley River and then Champlain. I don't see what, except for temporary inconvenience.
Is temporary inconvenience being tore up for, what, spring? What would that phase of this project be? 60 days, 90 days?
Yeah, so we did a couple of dam removal this summer, which are similarly like large projects and those were like three weeks. So, but it would depend on our contractor, if they had the ability to work that fast and have that volume of equipment. And that's another question I can ask. Again, it would just be that, you know, the person who worked on this kind of estimating the time, it would depend on our contractor.
Yeah, so that wouldn't really bother the farmer's market all that much if it was done at a certain time of year. The farmer's market could, the farmer's market for a temporary move could go some other part of the park. Maybe we could close out a part of that street for that one afternoon or something for the farmer's market temporarily. We do it for everything else.
Yeah, it's not, it's, that's not insurmountable.
My thought was, we've always talked about skating rinks and this and that and other thing. Why couldn't that be prepped for a nice skating rink on top after?
That part of it, at that time, they're not going to get much runoff anyway.
A dead level spot's all we need.
Yep, yep.
So what we have to, oh, go ahead Joe, I'm sorry. This is just me being nosy. Hillary, do you know, so working with wastewater, we're constantly asked to reduce our phosphorus. Do you know if the state is planning on coming to towns and enforcing towns to start removing phosphorus from wastewater? Has there been any rumbling about that?
So that, that was the, that was the whole, I mean, that was part of the argument that the state had when they were raising funds to do these type of projects, is that if the EPA couldn't get us to do these types of projects, then the EPA was the only recourse they had was to go to the wastewater treatment plants and be like, well, you can't, you can't put out any phosphorus then, which was going to cost way more than doing these type of projects. So I haven't heard that, I haven't heard anything negative about the wastewater treatment plants in this watershed. I know Rutland, which isn't in our watershed, has, has problems.
I think I misspoke, is, is the state, is there any anticipation to force towns to remove phosphorus from stormwater?
Oh.
Like force you to do it like they do with their wastewater?
So these projects are all non-regulatory, they're all voluntary. If this doesn't work, that might be the next step, would be to force these changes. And then it would be on the town to figure that out. So this is like the first step where it's all voluntary. So anything that Fairhaven does now is through the like nice voluntary program versus some ratcheting down that happens. And with climate change, it's a little unpredictable because we're getting such big storms. It's actually going to be hard to reduce, you know, I think it's going to be, take more work to reduce the phosphorus than people think it is. So something like this where we already have a contained volume of water that's being collected and channel, you know, channeled to one spot. And that's part of why this is such a nice project.
Thank you.
I'm going to add to that, part of that will be coming down the pipe probably anyway because already we're paying for the municipal roads general permit, which is controlling stormwater off of our dirt roads and erosion, which is quite a spark parcel into Champlain being kept clean and not putting all of our silt and fines and nasty stuff off of our roads into that. So phosphorus is just another, another part of that that we're going to want to take care of one way or another, so.
Well, the three acre rule too, that they passed, which has to do, some of you guys have some three acre sites like the Shaw's parking lot that fall under that rule, so they're getting ratcheted down on also and that's not voluntary, they have to do it.
I think school is as well.
Yeah, the school.
Academics as well.
I don't know if you can answer this, but having heard that what's happening with phosphate, if there are some, if there are some regulations that come down, will we be able to use this project as, as part of our voluntary reduction?
That's a good question and because that hasn't happened and we're all hoping that doesn't happen?
Right. Yeah.
I don't know.
It, I mean, it seems reasonable that we could, but it's, it's not anything you know that.
Right, it's just not anything, I, I deal only in non-regulatory things and so I don't know much about that side. And of course, nobody's talking about that right now.
The, the committee that we're on, I kind of, when we first started, I started going through it and it said non-regulatory water, regulatory broader projects. I'm thinking, what is not regulated in water projects? And it turns out volunteer projects are the ones there, so. And there's money, I mean, that's the thing, the money is going to get spent someplace. This will improve the drainage of the northern part of the, of the park and the northern part of town, it has to.
But, but to answer, I think one of the things you were looking for is what's the level of support do you go forward? You, you've heard one that says, I'm not really there. I can tell you, I'm, I was for it with the last one, I'm still for it. It sounds like, I don't want to put words in, but what I'm sitting here listening to is it sounds like the majority of the board is still supportive of the project and going forward. Even though it's not on, we can't vote on it here.
And that's fine.
But I don't want you leaving here going, boy, what a difference in, in coming back a year later is with, with where we are. I'm saying, no, there's, there's some questions and concerns, but it still sounds like, and maybe.
Well, procedurally, procedurally, we have an option on our agenda to add something to the agenda. But to be on the F and up, it would be better to have this on the next.
Sure.
And just vote, just vote at that point on the thing, you're not, you don't need anything within.
No, I, you know, and then, right, I'm not going to do anything in the next two weeks, I'm pretty flat out. And I also just want to make it clear that I do understand these concerns, I mean, I'm a. a tax payer too. Obviously I have a really big vested interest in water quality, that's kind of my passion, but I just, I just know there's a lot of damage happening in the lake, including, you know, there are times when people can't swim, people's dogs get poisoned when they drink this water and it has the cyanobacteria. You know, it contributes to the growth of plants that aren't native to the lake and so they aren't really checked by anything and they grow and they change the whole ecology of the lake and they're fertilized by this, by this phosphorus. So I do too have concerns about the, the economics of all this work and I do also want to make sure that these are good projects. So I do hear, I do hear the concerns and I want to make sure that, you know, hopefully we would, by the end, we would all feel comfortable, you know, with the project, but thank you. Yeah, thank you.
What we would, we would need to vote on, once again procedurally, is to go ahead with the planning stage at that point and so. So, and if, if at the planning stage, if we come to something that is just a drop dead no, we can say no.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's how I like to do it because I want to make sure the town, like whoever the partner is, in this case you guys, has, feels like they have control over this. This is your project in your town, I mean, this will be your project, so. And I'll get, the questions I have to answer are the, like, can we park on it, do we have to worry about compaction afterwards, what's it going to look like, is anything going to be coming out of the ground, like besides maybe an anthole? How would those boxes be maintained, like what would that maintenance look like? And then is it possible to leave it like flat for a skating rink? Which I think that we could do.
That would be, that would be real.
What would be the, what would be a long-term benefit for this town, Fairhaven?
For the town? Well, I think that, I think like we've, so that's, so it's interesting because the town of Rutland, or the city of Rutland argues that, you know, even though they have these overflows into the creek, this sewage overflows during storms, they're actually treating their stormwater. Like any event that doesn't overflow, they're treating their stormwater. And so I think here we're going to be treating stormwater and it's completely disconnected, of course, from the sewer, so we don't have to worry about those issues. But we're going, we're taking a big piece of the drainage and we're treating it, which is great.
It's our contribution to Champlain, which is, which is, which is part of us.
Yeah. And there are interesting species, you know, that are like threatened and endangered mussel species that live in the Polley River downstream of here and it can only help their habitat to not have this sort of fertilizer going in where they live, so. There are some interesting things happening in the river that we might also be improving.
They want us to do all this for Champlain, but they don't do anything with New York State, so.
Oh. Shoot, I'll bring you information about this too, I just heard something about this, that part of the reason New York didn't get pulled into the TMDL as much as they could have is that there was some kind of political thing that went on and that the EPA has kind of finally recognized this and they're going to be potentially reopening their, their TMDL to ask New York to do more. And I will figure out who I heard that from and see if I can get any information on that because that has been a big concern of people in Vermont. Now I just have to remember where I heard it.
We will, we will set that, you're welcome to come back next week, in two weeks. Or trust us to do that, trust us that it will be on the agenda. And if you have any wording for, preferred wording for a motion, please send it to Joe or I.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll do that. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, this is just a drawing, this could be a little bit different shape and still do the same thing. I assume it's a series of stones and pipes and filters and.
Right, right. Yes, and I think any constraints that we, that should be worked around would go to, you know, like the first meeting with the engineer that gets hired, would, that meeting would happen, like an orientation meeting.
In other words, we stay away, the fence may be as a buffer and this and that and everything.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing too, and I'm, I'm, yes, that's fine. And also when I've worked with these companies, like construction companies, you know, they tend to put things back, so you can't, like a week or two after they're gone, you can't really even tell that they've been there, so if a fence got temporarily moved and put back.
Usually better. Most, most always better.
So we can sort of talk through that, I guess, like if it does need to be moved, how does it go back and or don't go near it, like figure out what the best solution is when we have the contractor hired or the engineer hired.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks. We'll, we'll have a vote on that next, next time for that and hopefully go forward.
Thank you.
The next thing is amendments to the agenda.
I actually have, can we add personnel under executive session? That's 1 VSA 313A3.
Already got personnel there.
But it's an A3?
It's an, yeah, it's an A3.
Yeah, actually you have, you have personnel attorney-client, is that?
No, it's a little different.
Yeah, there's a one.
Eight, eight three.
So I'll make a motion to add another item under executive session of personnel 1VSA 313A3.
Give her a second. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll add that into the executive session. All right, moving right along. Any other amendments, I'm sorry? Approval of minutes of November 29.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 29.
Is there a second?
He's got one thing on the minute there.
We got a second at first before.
Okay. Right, well, a second, all right.
Yes?
On the park fence there.
What page?
Pardon?
Page?
Oh, page, page three. It's, I think things got twisted up a little bit. It said that I felt that $5,000 is too high for the price of paint. It's not that it's too high, it's just that we don't have it and it seems like a lot of money to come up with it. That's why I suggested we try to volunteer to have the fence painted the first time and then try to get something going for future paint projects.
How do you want me to change it?
I don't know. But, but that's what I kind of meant to say.
Do we take the field $5,000 too high and just go with something field, are there other alternatives that can be utilized or something like that?
I'll fix it.
I mentioned volunteer work.
Anything else?
That's, that's all I have.
I have one too. Also on page three, under budget review, the last sentence talks about increasing by $4,000. The board actually increased that only by $1,000.
Mm-hmm. My fault, I'm sorry.
Good catch. That's right, I had that marked down right there.
Is it increased to 4,000 maybe?
Increased to 1,000.
To 1,000, okay.
He's, he probably already spending that money.
Right, $5,000 gone.
Yeah, see ya. Anything else? With the changes, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Five minutes for public comment. Are you on, Mike, are you?
Anyone on?
You want to talk or you got to talk?
I would just advise it would be in my better interest to be at the meeting.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, helpful speaker, I'm sorry. Burtman heads. Your first.
Pretty much three snow events or events requiring attention from the highway crew, looking at about four inches maybe total overall of snow, about 30 tons of salt, 15 yards of sand for those three events. Sunday's event, of course, was awesome for a Sunday and start snowing in the morning and just keep doing it all, gosh darn day long, why not? So there, that, we have one truck that had some minor issues, that truck's back in service, should be ready to go for starting Thursday evening at some point. Still waiting on the, what's going to go on with that one, doesn't look entirely that difficult, but we never know.
What's wrong with it?
What's that?
What's wrong with it?
What's that?
What's wrong with it?
The truck?
Yeah.
Is the Ford, the hydraulic lines that go to the front, up to the plow, where they go up and around the front tire assembly wore a hole in it. It's 12 years old, so we got our life out of it, so. But that one's back together. You guys have been working on all the other trucks, cleaning them back up, getting them all greased up again, checking them over, make sure we didn't miss anything else on any of the other trucks that might have had some issues. We're hoping that the parts, oh, sorry. We're trying to get some stuff together to try and make sure we can have some, try and pretreat a little liquid for Thursday going into the storm. The temperatures the way they were are looking are not favorable towards the liquid we have on hand, we're hoping to make a little bit in-house, a solution that will serve through the temperature range that we're going to be seeing through this storm. Yeah. Waiting on for water plant, those guys will be part of that too. Still waiting on parts for that leak we have in the bypass pipe. The last of the parts are hopefully here today, this afternoon yet, if not tomorrow. So we can remove, we did get confirmation from the state that we can remove that bypass pipe that takes the, could take the raw water from going through the plant and just bypass it altogether. They reviewed it through their engineering firm and agree with us that that's something we've never wished to put in operation. Back when the plant was first designed, maybe served a purpose back in the day before we had the two storage tanks fully completed. So if a big event downtown happened or something, we could just send water for a fire suppression or emergency of some sort. The million gallons we have on hand now that's treated, that should hopefully never be necessary. And talking with the state, public health does have to take priority over toxic conservation at some point, so at some point we don't want to just send raw water into town for a fire versus the drinkability for everyone else that's on this system as well, so. They confirmed that, waiting on the parts for that. I'm still waiting on a few parts on back order for the chemical tanks. We need some flexible couplings, so when the tanks are sitting there, all of our piping that gets mounted to the ground has a flexible coupling between it and the tank to keep the manufacturer's warranty. Those are on back order, so we're waiting on those. And once those come in, we'll be able to finally get those tanks all piped up and ready to go. Mike has been working with RASP Engineering Panel Company to trace out some more of the wiring issues we've had in the plant. They have a good grasp on what's going on, are working to get a order together or at least let us know what we need for parts and pieces to go forward with that, a panel upgrade like we had talked about a while ago now at this point. That money will come from the capital budget, the capital funds, the same as the tanks did, so we're getting closer there finally. Wastewater, the garage as of now, it's the last big piece of the upgrade down there is complete. We have three more sluice gates and another valve in the contact, chlorine contact chamber that need to go in, but with the weather going from being okay to flipping rate to it's winter now, they push that and we're in wait till spring. Some of it has to have curing, or curing, curing cement and stuff in it, so there's no way with the weather going the way it is now for them to do that. So this spring, those big gates and valves will go in and then we'll be complete, complete on that project through and through. Carrie was actually, came down, came down to the garage and was looking for me, found she actually got to use one of the, not upgrades, but a reefer, the one, so the, where all the sludge goes to and settles out before it's taken out to Rutland, she was able to use her valve to actually manually decant from that tank the clear water, super nating out of it, put it back in the plant instead of having to ship it. For the last many years even, peeing them, the valve has been, just wore out, rusted up and not, or broken, not functional. Around the humming years, they've had to use sump pumps and try and find the level of the water and actually suck it out with a sump pump, so. She was actually able to just spin the valve and get it to go down into the super nate and take it off, so she's very excited about that. That's about it for down there, the, another one down there, you see the wastewater truck driving around, it's got its crane mounted in the back now, that was part of the VLCT Safety Loss Program, right? So we got that installed, so when they're out at any of the pump stations that have the submersible pumps, they can actually use that winch to bring the pump out of there and not have to jury rafe unfortunately, like they did the old system, the old system, they had to mount it in the back of the truck and they had to go, and the cable wasn't even actually long enough on the spool to reach all the way down the wet well, they had to pull it up halfway, try and hitch it and rehook and pull the rest of the way out. So now this has electric cable winch on it, so once they get it hooked onto that, they can pull it all the way completely out of the wet well and actually work, so. But that was funded 80% through VLCT, 20% through us, so it was a great program. And also while it was at the shop, they had a good price on a used plow for the front of it and Joe and I made the executive decision to go ahead with that because now they can clean up their property down there, their pump stations by themselves and we don't have to make sure we get a truck down there every time it snows, so. That's all I got for you right now.
Paul, I do have one thing.
Being the representative for the rescue squad, for those of you I didn't or weren't here earlier, we did, as the board, yesterday evening approve the financial part to buy a new ambulance. So hopefully, I'll go and when everything goes okay, that'll be fully in service within a month and a half.
Oh, look fast.
So, everything was approved to go through the finances part of it, so.
I know that those things are getting old and.
They're getting, they are old, but it'll be a learning experience for them, they're used to having the big rigs and now they have a van, so.
I'm manager.
Oh, I was going to sit in for the police chief if that's okay.
Okay.
Just very quickly, the report was put in your boxes, but just quickly, 44 traffic violations, 37 warnings, traffic warnings. We have been spending time down at the downtown with parking violations, so you'll see a parking violation there. And another 47 sets of civilian fingerprints, so that, that continues to keep them busy down the hall. And that's what I, for the police department.
Why wasn't there any response on Saturday? Why couldn't we, why couldn't anybody get hold of the police department in town or the state police?
So the, the state police no longer take non-911 calls. So if somebody is, if the police department's out on their patrol, if you call the non-emergency number, the state doesn't pick it up anymore.
Why wasn't, why wasn't there something here where you can get a hold of somebody from our department?
So the phones don't bounce to the cars right now? We are, there is talk about somehow, when you call the landline here to have it bounce to like a service phone, but we haven't figured that out yet. We've been.
What happens if there's a real emergency? How do you get a hold of the police here?
911.
Yeah.
So, but again, the state's not used, they're not picking up those non-emergency calls anymore. So if it's an emergency, you always call 911, you'll get a hold of somebody. If you just call, you're not just going to get anybody on the non-emergency number.
If you called, if you call the state or the town police number, it doesn't automatically dispatch out to, to the person on, on duty?
It doesn't go to the state police anymore, really?
It used to go to the state police, but they stopped doing that.
Yeah, if you called the state police and listened to their phone system, you don't get anybody. It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
It's press one if you need this, press two if you need that.
Better hope somebody doesn't.
If you need to speak with the dispatcher, you have to wait till it says press eight. You go through seven. You go through seven pumps before you can even press a number to talk to somebody.
We should investigate that. We should investigate how to get to that. That's, that's just, I mean, why do we have anybody on if they're not gonna, if they can't answer? It's not that they're not, they don't want to, it's just that they don't know.
They're in their car. Yeah, right, so we've, we're moving to Comcast and we are looking into a way to have like a duty phone and have it bounce from here to there, but it's, it's just a matter of getting that, getting that fix in place. Yeah, no, it's, it's something we've, we've thought about. As a heads up, and I did let the Dog Park Committee know. Practico, the fence company, was out today looking at the fence. They said they were gonna fix it if they could fix it onsite today. If not, they'll grab their parts and they'll come back. So they're, the Dog Park is in the process of being fixed. I was approached by a young man, Fred. He lives up off, he has a camp off of Town Highway 69. I forget his last name. But he was wondering, he popped in, he said, "Well, is the town willing to throw up Town Highway 69 and make it a private road?" And I said, "It's not my decision, but I'll ask the board." So that's the map of Town Highway 69. Is that something the board would entertain? Should I move forward with something like that?
Class four road here?
It's class four road right now, yes.
Make it a private road?
He wants us to throw it up.
That's hunting, that's, that's our access to the Fairhaven North Woods. That's hunting access, that's hiking access. Why would we want a private road that people would try to keep everyone out? I think it's, my answer would be no, not, not even.
I would be very hesitant to, as long as it's class four, as long as we're not gonna make it a class three and then, then he'd have to maintain it. Class four has to be maintained to a certain level once a year. That's fine. I don't wanna, I don't wanna give that up.
Is this road passable now?
Yes.
Probably, once a year, you know, in the summertime.
And I, and it's gated, when you get way up in, they, they gate it and, but that's the state.
Which is, which is sixty-nine, which one is?
The one that crosses the causeway there.
Okay, yeah.
Just one of those highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, yep, yep.
That's, I just don't know, I think if we, if we were to give that up as a private road, rightfully so, this room should be filled with people jumping up and down to what we just took away from, from being able to. Whether it's hunting, snowmobiling, when they have it in the snow. There's just, no. Don't blame him for asking, but...
That's some of the property that Town Fairhaven already owns anyways up in there.
We own some property further north, that's where your town forest is.
The North Woods is something like, how many acres?
Three hundred and some acres on there.
Yeah, that's further.
It probably sits back over...
Yeah, okay, we will, I promised I would ask.
No, don't, no problem with asking.
So the audit continues. The financial audit for the town auditors will be here at our next meeting. They've been pounding away, getting more and more information. I reached back out to the insurance company. We're still having trouble with that, the vent stack coming out of the sewer pipe back here. A solution is to just replace the pipe, so I'm gonna see what the insurance company says about that. Oh, Mr.?
Venting what?
Sewer, the vent that goes up out of the top. Oh, I think I left a copy.
They cleared, I mean, is it plugged or is there, is there a squirrel died in there or?
They've, they've flushed it, what, three times now, but still it's, there was a little bit of water on the ladies' room floor today, so I... Yep, we're trying. I sent in front of the board this, this letter. This is the letter we, we talked about, I was supposed to bring it last meeting, I got it this time. That's the letter to Mr. Canfield concerning the class-two paving. We are a year behind. I think it'll be, if we get a grant next year, it'll be about six years since we received a class-two paving grant. It's a little bit behind, but I didn't know if the board was still interested in sending this letter or not. But it's drafted and ready to go if you're so inclined.
I think we should send it.
Yeah.
I don't believe it could hurt. It's not confrontational, it's just saying the fact and, and it gives Canfield something to walk into the, into that committee meeting and say, "Here's what we're up against, why."
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I would, I would think so.
I'll make a motion that we send our, our letter to Representative Canfield about our concern about getting a class-two paving grant and asking for help on Scottsdale, for the Scottsdale road.
Second. Everybody okay with this? Jay seconded it. All those in favor? All opposed?
Yeah, he can have that in his pocket when he gets there.
Anything else you can help with would be great also. Don't stop there.
Adam Street Bridge.
He is, I will give him credit, he researched, because he was told that the Adam Street Bridge was not even on a list, any list in the, Cindy Adams told him that. And it is on, it is on the list, it is, it gets bumped down because it's inside a town and not on a main highway, so.
I read it before.
Yeah. But it's, it's not legitimate in terms of safety of, of the town, so. So he, he understands, I'll, I'll give him credit, he's, he has done a little research on that.
So I think it was, it was posted on Facebook and I don't know if the, the board had heard, but we was, we had our election audit this week or last. Last week, yeah, and it came out clean, so no, no findings for the election audit, so that's great. In today's world, it's nice to be able to say that.
One of the things that we were just randomly chosen, it was, there wasn't any reason why we were on there. We were just randomly chosen, they chose certain towns of a certain size and we just happened to be one. Just to be careful, just so they knew that there was not a problem, and it turned out there wasn't.
Last night, Chad wasn't there, but the revenue committee met last night at five o'clock. Since, great discussion. We'll meet, I think, three more times between now and mid-January and the, the committee will bring back suggestions for the Board of Selectmen.
Did we ever add, did we ever raise the fee for West Haven on the budget revenue?
When we talk revenue, we're gonna start the conversation today and this will be the point, the opportunity. Training, so it's, I go in fits and spurts with trainings. We're doing tax collector training, since I'm spinning up a lot of that. The trailer park is almost ready to be posted. We're doing some performance review trainings with me and the senior staff. And I had one more in there. Oh, yeah, the First Amendment audits, you know, people will come into Town Hall and bring their cameras in and they'll be a little aggressive trying to get staff to, to react so they can post that online. We're doing trainings on that, just how, how to handle people doing the First Amendment audits. Couldn't remember if I told you last time, but the cemetery has been surveyed and Ms. Stevens can purchase that other, that lot now whenever she's ready. Reports for the, reports for the appropriations are coming due, Fairhaven Rescue Squad. Most everybody does have their report in though. We did get one from Fairhaven Concerned yesterday. It came in, it came in the mail. So that's, that's, that's going. We did a lot of early outreach to get people on board and get their paperwork in. Things are going much smoother this time around. And then the IRS, like I said, I reached out to the IRS and talked to them about the trailer park and that is moving forward. And I talked to, last thing. I talked to Fred yesterday. We had the meet the candidates night last year in February where the dog, you know, the animals came and the selectmen, selectmen candidates came and spoke a little bit about why they wanted to be selectmen. We're gonna do that same thing this year, or next year, February 25th at 1:00 PM at the gazebo. This time we'll have a speaker and maybe some music.
You got four seats being booked on this year.
Yeah, there's quite a few, it's running.
That's it?
That's it.
Let's scoop on cleaning up the helvis.
The white one is, is empty, it's clean, to use lack of a better word. The brick house is mostly clean. Last I heard, I asked for a report today and I never, I never heard back, but last I heard the basement needed, we got it and that was the, the final go for that one.
How many, how many loads have they taken out here?
I heard seven, seven forty.
Where's the money coming from for that?
We're gonna put that, costs is gonna be associated with the property and then when the properties are sold, it'll be a requirement, that money will be recouped at sale.
Where is the money coming from right now to pay for it?
Just out of general fund. There's no line item for this type of thing.
I know. What bothers me is that, I understand it had to be done, don't get me wrong. But we can find money to pay for seven loads of junk. Couldn't find enough money for two loads of hotnecks to finish up Scottsdale. And that kind of year takes me a bit, because two loads would have made that right down to where he, you know, Aaron wouldn't have had the problem up there that they're gonna continue having at the end of that paving. And two loads would have, even I think one load would have taken care of it. And I just feel that sometimes we find money to do projects and sometimes we don't. I just, it kinda bothers me.
So for, I don't know if you want a response, but, so for this particular project, we'll be able to recoup the funds. I can't spend money that we can't get back. If I just throw money at the highway, there's no way to get that money back. I can't, I can't spend money like that. It's not, it's not appropriate for the town manager to do that.
Somewhere in his budget, we could've found the money.
There's no one.
That's all I got.
Old business, any old business. New business, reappointment of the EMDs.
These are our Emergency Management Directors. It's Mr. Heller and Mr. Humphries.
So we're looking for a motion. I'll make the motion that we reappoint Jim Heller as the Emergency Management Director and Bill Humphries as the designee.
Second?
I second. Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Jim Heller.
Jim Heller.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
This one's for you.
Transfer station credit, Eureka Lodge?
Yep, so the Eureka Lodge is asking for credit at our transfer station. They have submitted their application.
Dollar, what thing that they, or is it?
No, it's just, they just give us an application and say, "Hey, please give us credit."
Okay, so you need a motion to give, I'll make a motion to give the Eureka Lodge credit at our transfer station?
There's a second. Not quite clear on this.
It's so they can go down and not have to...
Didn't we just do one for, for one of the contractors that was, that wasn't worded this way, was it? Am I wrong?
It was the same.
Is it the same?
Same application.
If it wasn't, there's a fee or something at that point, you know?
No, it's just they pay monthly.
Yeah. Yeah, we just invoice them.
Are you in your second on that?
I'll second it.
Any other questions? You comfortable?
Yeah, I, it seemed like maybe that's what it was, they paid monthly and this, this was just... I think it was mentioned before.
The other thing that there usually is, is, is a review of credit and Eureka Lodge is Eureka Lodge, you know, there's, there's credit there or...
Yeah, they, they didn't provide me with the...
Right.
Yeah, it's the lodge.
Right, I think we could find them if we had to.
They, they wouldn't have that much trash, would they?
No.
No.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
There's nothing to sign, this is for them to sign.
Budget review. Auditing department is first on.
The auditing department, that's just your, that's currently RHR Smith right now, that's to do annual audit.
Do we have any auditors?
Elected auditors?
What was his name?
Yeah, Glenn is, Glenn Roberts is an elected auditor and there's two vacancies, vacancies for the three town elected audit positions. But last March, Glenn Roberts got elected for another, I think, three-year term, yeah.
Any questions? It's up $200. Okay, listers.
So I did invite the listers, nobody is here, but I did cut $4,000 out of the listers' budget. This is just because there was no use. Last year, they were $3,500 under, year before, $5,000 under, year before that, $6,000 under. They're just, they're just not using the money.
There is no danger of us hitting any kind of thresholds for reappraisal at this point?
No, not, and that's, that would be a...
That would be an increase. You'd get a lot of notice for that too, I mean, we would know. They would start running flags up and the state would start running flags up.
We're still over 100%.
Yeah, yeah, we're very, yeah.
We were over 100.
The coefficient of whatever that one is, is still, still good too.
We're still, you have to be, what, 20% on this side or that?
Yes.
I, I've, no, no question for the monies there. I'm just, just a comment and thinking in terms of, we currently have three listers there and, and one was, may not be running, I don't know, we, but we...
I hear we're losing one soon.
That, that's my understanding. And that will, so we'll be down to two. And, and the only question, again, it's not, just, just wanna get it out there. The, the two listers we have are, are going to be, they're, they're, one is our town clerk and the other one...
Is he assistant?
May be running for assistant clerk. There's some, there's some double duty that, that may be going on.
That's not a position we elect, is it?
Those, those listers are elected?
No, 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 I mean, the, 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 um, town clerk, assistant town clerk.
No, the assistant, don't think so, I think that's appointed.
Town clerk's appointed, yeah.
Right. Mm-hmm. No, it's just, I, I, I looked at it and I, it made, I had some questions in my mind around, you know, they've done some great, the listers have done some great work putting in, uh, the online version, so you can look at the tax map, see the tax cards, and where everything is. Most of that looks done, I didn't know if, if for years, I don't have the history of, of up until when they needed to do all kinds of catch-up, whether the, it, it looks like the 25,000 we thought, and the fact that we're only using less than 22, probably is, maybe we're catching up with some of that work, so that it's able to be done in fewer hours, that was all, I was just, looks like, and if I, I'd only ask the question if they're here, is that a good assumption? I don't know if it's a good assumption or not.
Well, we'll get an answer probably sometime before the end of the budget season.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I have no problem with a minus 16%.
Now the question's out there, they'll, they'll.
That's right. I have no problem with a minus 16%, but I don't know, did that cause a hardship, did they, I, I don't know, that's all. Okay?
And if somebody's not running, then we should probably try to find somebody that would like to be on there, 'cause there's a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
Anyways, so if you're, at this point, we're down 4,000 on that particular budget.
Mm-hmm.
Which is okay.
Yeah.
Um, delinquent tax collecting.
Yeah, so, so that one, that's, uh, what I left was the advertising for that, we, we usually hit about 3,000, a little over last time. Um, I did cut the professional services out, just 'cause we do our own tax sales. Um, if I have legal questions, I, uh, uh, call VLCT, email VLCT. If it's really bad, I'll call R Legal, but it's usually not, not too onerous.
No.
Okay, I'm going to municipal building on page four.
I think it says, yep. For municipal building, you did see an increase here. Uh, office supplies, paper was up more than 30% last year. Um, we did finally take an increase this year, we've been trying to hold that steady, but it's not, prices are up. Uh, fuel, again, prices are way up, I rounded that up to 20. To be honest, I don't know if that's gonna cover next winter or not, depends on how the fuel prices go. Um, and under telephone, uh, those prices went up as well. Um, that's, that's a story in itself, but we were supposed to see a reduction last year, um, and instead, we saw a pretty, pretty high rate hike.
Like $10?
Yeah, NHC, so, um, that's why we're moving over to Comcast, it's, I feel like I kinda got a bait and switch, or said, you're gonna save money, and then it went up, so Comcast says they will be able to cut our, our phone bill. Uh, technology service, that's a $2,600 increase to Nemrick. Uh, we haven't been tracking our accounts receivable, except on a spreadsheet. Um, this, this helps us better manage the, uh, the account receivables, so people who owe us money, that now goes into the system, as opposed to just putting it on an Excel spreadsheet. And a small bump at electric.
And 010 is where we pay for things like if we're fixing the, the soffit and painting and things, does it come out of this?
Yep, so this, this is the line, this is the, the budget that would pay for repairs to town hall.
And, and the reason I bring that up is there's some, the town hall, there's some things, like some ceilings, and there's a soffits, and there's, do we have, uh?
We have a reserve account, no?
We use that, that's gonna replace that furnace, it's down there grumbling, yep.
I, I thought the furnace was part of this whole deal, we're doing the elevator.
It is, it was part of the match. That money went to buy the furnace, that was part of the match to do the rest of the project. It was there for the furnace anyway, we're just.
I'm just, under repair and maintenance, I'm just, I'm, just a question more, we've been talking for the last couple of years about, about, I know we had a very high quote for, uh, painting the soffits where the one that the wet squirrels were getting in and that kinda stuff, saying, uh, do we, um, eventually, it's gonna be one big price tag, or we're gonna have to start putting a little bit of money and fixing a few things, uh, and, and, is this a place where?
Would that be other purchase services?
I don't, I don't know what line item you would, having someone come in, yep.
Other, so we have the repair, we have supplies for repair and maintenance, and also the repair and maintenance line, which would be where, like, if I hired a, a painter, I guess, or a plumber, uh, we'd take it out of that line, the repairs and maintenance, so.
I just, I, I just struggle with seeing this going down, everything's going up so much. You know, this, this looks like we're not going in the right direction here.
Hard decisions were made to make this budget after.
Right, and I'm usually the one who's trying, trying to get the money away, but also, as we're, as we're coming in, and I, I, and we're, we're, we deferred a lot of maintenance to this building, that, and I'm, I'm just wondering if, uh, if we, we need to put something there to at least address, maybe, uh, fixing, I think we had, I, there was, oh, the piece that's sitting in the corner right there, that, that, it reminds me that we have a piece of the, the building that came up under soffit, that hasn't been, so the hole where that is, that we fix it and we paint something, and say, our goal is to get that done, and what's, what's it gonna, uh, what can we, we need to put in there and, and find where?
Well, um, the obvious thing is to reinstate the 2,000, but is that reasonable to, to think is anywhere's near enough to do any soffit work?
You know, if, if we just picked at it, if I was, if we said that, you know, 'cause the, the soffit work was just on this piece here, if we just did this side of the building this year, and then this, the front, and the other side just kinda worked their way around, it'd take a decade to get around, but it's a place to start.
And I, and I would be remiss if, uh, if John was sitting here, he'd say, how about that, the two ce, the, the two ceiling tiles in the, in the fire department here that, uh, we, we've been talking about for a couple of years.
I think that's the only way to go with it anyways.
That's gonna do it.
Okay, good.
If we do one side here, that's all you can hope for.
Right, and I'm, I wasn't looking for big money, but I'm saying.
It's kinda like, it's kinda like everything we do, like, park fence, paint one section, one section, you know? Scotch Hill, section this year, section this year, section next year, you know? That way we keep everything moving forward.
So you wanna just go back to the 2,000?
Put the 2,000 back and bring in 5,000, that we, we can't, we can't cut what was there, I, I'm not looking to.
Do, do you want me to get, get a number, instead of just kinda just throwing money at it? I could get you a number to do just one side and some woodwork, and then, then you'd know what you're looking at.
That would be helpful.
Yep, that would be, then we'd know what we need to put in.
So if you, if you didn't need to put anything in, that'd be great, right? Or if you need to put, okay, I'll, I'll get some.
We know better than that.
Trying.
I just, I hate to be facetious, but you keep adding money to.
I, it's a strange position, I'll be, you'll see the real me later on when I'm trying to pull money from other places to help pay for where we're spending, 'cause you only have so much, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna tentatively.
Look at putting some more.
Look at that, that 2,000 back in, but at this point, we're gonna keep it there as a placeholder.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Any other thing on municipal? Um, the place we may be able to work with is the fuel, it's, it is coming down a little bit, you know, I mean, it's, it's up, it's up from, it's up from where it was, so.
It's down from where it was a few months ago.
Yeah, so we, we spent, I guess we spent 17 last year, so it's, it's really not.
Gas was down to 334 in Springfield last night.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I paid that on the highway, um, on the thruway, um, down.
The interstate is cheaper than Vermont.
I couldn't believe that. So, yeah, we might be able to get some wiggle room there, let's hold off on that, but I mean, it's just a, might be a pipe dream, but, okay, cemetery, gone seven.
For cemetery expenses, uh, you will see a reduction in salary, that goes back to that spreadsheet that shows the allocation of labor. Um, this, uh, last year, we just happened to use a little bit less labor in the cemetery, so we just, we shifted it around. We did see increases elsewhere, this is just one of the ones that you saw a decrease in. Um, the, the big, the big whack on this, uh, we see the overtime was just cut right out, um, but other than that, the cemetery committee, uh, we, I reduced that from 2,000 down to 100, uh, and that's because of, most years, they don't use any of those funds. Um, they did have a big year, I think, four or five years ago, where they spent almost $3,000 to, I think it's to repair headstones.
I think they took some trees down, too.
Trees?
Does that include all the cemeteries? This one here or just Cedar Grove?
It's the cemetery committee, but, yeah, this is for the town cemeteries, this budget.
Because we're doing a lot of repairing of headstones over here in this one. So, I don't know, I'd be just.
Maybe just reach out to them and see, 'cause that's a scary number to, to go down. I, I know why you did it, I mean, I, I appreciate you and the effort, but I don't, I don't wanna step on those people if they've got plans and they just expect the same money.
You know, in all fairness, I did not, I did not talk to them about this. I was just gonna surprise them.
Yeah.
Well, even if you cut it in half.
Yeah.
I mean.
Give them 1,000.
Yeah, instead of 2,000, do 1,000, unless they feel that they don't need it. I mean, I think you should ask them.
Yeah, let's talk to them, make sure that they don't have any.
Because their actual is just under 500.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's, if 1,000, but, well, let's see what they say. So, if they don't spend it one year, there's kinda like a carryover, is that what we're? No? It doesn't do that. It doesn't do that? Unfortunately, uh, it used to be like that, you could carry over for three months. But you can't do that now, for some reason, some, some bean counter, um, decided that was a bad idea.
It has to go in the general fund.
It has to go to general fund, so you have that carry forward that's, that's huge, which is your argument about the, about possibly the highway department, if there's carry forward, why can't we use that? However, I think you have to get permission.
Before, I know when I was on the board originally, if they had, if they had excess in their budget come July 1st, it was used for three months.
You, you could, you could.
90 days.
What was the word? It wasn't carrying. There was a term.
Yeah.
It'll come to me, I'll call you. It'll be about 3 o'clock this morning.
That, that's the way we always did it in New Hampshire, too, it's, that was just three months on, you use that money, but.
That's not accepted anymore.
They put the kibosh to it. No, they kiboshed it.
I don't understand why, because it's still the town's money.
Right.
And so you throw it in the, you throw it in the general fund, that's why we end up with a million-dollar surplus.
Right.
Because you can't see, because projects weren't getting done, it's just, they weren't getting used, the money that was put in their budget, and, and I think that's ridiculous, I, I.
Yeah, and if you, you know, if you're out of time in a budget year.
Yeah.
That money's still there. But anyways, it goes to, see, you have to go through the cumbersome practice of saying you've got this much carry forward, and we can talk to the accountant about this, too, um, next meeting or the end of the year, end of the month, but it is the.
Because in our previous accountants didn't have a problem. We changed accountants, that's when we started running into problems.
The state gave us trouble.
The state doing that?
Yeah, yeah, so, so you have to put it into a carry, a general carry forward, so his budget, 03, has a carry forward, the 01 budget has a carry forward, and you can't designate it specifically for a line on him, it just comes about as a carry forward, and then the next year, you could ask for that, some of that carry forward money.
To be revoted on. Use people to buy back your budget with it. And you can't even do that anymore.
So that money gets set there out in the middle?
Yeah.
For a year? Essentially, and then you, you get permission at the next town meeting to do it. So, so when we get all done, they'll, theoretically, they'll show us some carry forward, and we'll put that on, we'll put that on the, um, or the vote.
Vote.
In March, to use. But.
And that's after, that, that's how the budget's determined after that.
Yeah, but you're, it, it does, it doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna buy your budget down, it means you're gonna have additional funds to spend, not additionally, you're gonna have funds to spend that are directed at a certain location, you know, so that, uh, for instance, we usually added.
We sold it one year for, to buy one of the trucks.
Yeah.
Took anticipated funds, I think that's what they call it.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, unanticipated.
Yeah, take a certain percentage of them and use it toward purchasing one of the vehicles.
Yeah, and, and, you know, 01 budget, what do we generally use that for? It escapes me right now.
It is a couple of things, I think we moved into the fire department once, maybe some, some reserve.
Oh, we did some air packs, we did some air packs one, at one time.
Some air packs.
Yeah, yeah. So, it gets spent, it's just more, I guess, I guess it's, uh, more transparent to the voters, because they see that number, whereas if we carry it forward, the only people that get to make that decision are the five of us, at that point, which, you know, used to be okay, but now somebody feels that it isn't.
Okay.
That's a terrible explanation, I know.
So, so we're gonna leave, we're gonna leave this, their actual was, they actually spent, uh, about, they had $8,000 that they, their budget for that they didn't spend, and, and this is a $5,000 less versus eight, is what I'm looking from the budget of the prior year. About like some, you're gonna check with them to see what they have, and we won't make any changes for now, I'll do that.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Uh, airpark is next, oh, that's back on.
For the airpark, uh, you'll see a small increase in salaries there, this goes back to the DPW spreadsheet we talked about. We did see a little bit more labor, uh, I'm guessing because of the dog park, just more cleaning, mowing.
You put that water line in, too.
Yep, with the water line. There, there was a lot going on, uh, last year. Um, I did whack the, uh, repair and maintenance, again, the decisions had to be made, uh, but it's a new, the, the dog park itself is a new facility, so she, we really shouldn't have a lot of maintenance there. Uh, my only concern would be the, uh, bathrooms, if something happens there, but, again, utilities were cut, we anticipated a higher use of electricity out there, I'm, I'm sorry, utilities, uh, for water and electricity, but, uh, that never materialized, so we just whacked it back down.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, health inspector. Hey, John?
How's your day?
So, for health, if I could chime in, um, I have John's, uh, John Lulick's, uh, salary request, he requested $5,000 total, um, under public health salary. I think he wanted that broken out also into, for the deputy's salary, but I don't know what his calculations were.
Yeah, I, and, and I don't wanna jump, and, and if you were gonna say John, but, I'd like to, John couldn't be here tonight, but he, he was saying if he was here, he'd be, he'd be recommending saying, hey, look at, uh, that 17. but he, he was saying if he was here, he'd be recommending saying, hey, look at, uh, that seventeen that we've been using, that one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars is, is pretty low, he's, he's operating in the red for the amount of work we've been out on. He recommends that should be two thousand five hundred, and that the, we, we've got an assistant, and we should put another thousand five hundred in for the assistant, I think that's when you say your, your five thousand. Also, for the travel, for the mileage, that forty dollars isn't very realistic in today's, wouldn't even fill, fill the tank. Uh, we're, uh, he was recommending five hundred dollars for, for gas. And, and these probably, I don't think they've probably been adjusted for a very long time. And we seem to be using our health inspector a lot.
A lot.
A lot.
Seems to be more and more.
As we go forward, so... I don't know what your thoughts are.
So, your suggestions? I mean, I...
I'm, I'm...
We are using them a lot, and it doesn't make any sense to underfund it.
My, my suggestion is on their public health salary, we change that to two thousand five hundred. We add, I don't know if Liz can put the assistant, or if, or if you're gonna include it right in that salary.
We can make an assistant, right?
But you can put the assistant underneath it for one thousand five hundred. And then also, where we took out totally the, I didn't see the, the mileage over there, I, I think that should be five hundred dollars for mileage, because that's mileage for not only the health inspector, but that's mileage that the assistant would be... Would be using too. I, I think it gets us a little fair, they're still, they're still not making a bunch of money, it's not about, and they're not making...
It's not really about money though.
It shouldn't cost them money to do the job.
Who's the assistant?
Sarah.
Sarah, the interview, Sarah.
Sarah Trombley.
Trombley, yeah.
Liz on Second Street or something.
According to the town clerk, she can't start until...
Till the first.
July, or January first.
Because of when the application was submitted.
Right, yeah, once again, yeah, I mean, I've spoken with her a couple of times, and I was gonna get her to do the one job if I did an inspection, and I called her and asked her, and she was like, well, I just got an email that stated I can't do it till the first, and I said, well, then we won't do anything till the first, because if you trip and fall or something happens, then it's not gonna look good. I agree with you on what they should do for the races, I think that should, I think that should go in, because it's, again, you can't ask them to do it for nothing, and they're, they're, they're a lot more than what they were before.
And I'm almost...
Do you have, do you have your, the rabies shot, or isn't there a shot for rabies and stuff that you should have when you're dealing with dogs, or not? I have tetanus and a gun.
But you're right.
But didn't they, didn't John have, didn't he have to get... Oh, I got my hep shots in there, I've had those for, yeah, my gosh, yeah.
The other thing that you may run into is training that you get, you're gonna need, so...
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Mileage will come in handy for that. And we'll pay any, any costs of that, but...
Yeah.
We should have mileage.
Yeah, when anything pops up, I mean, I had the one...
Between the two of you.
But it was on a weekday, and there's no way that was gonna happen, so, yeah.
So, the...
Yeah, it's been a venture so far.
The proposal is to get up to forty-five hundred on this, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. You have four thousand five, five hundred total, and you...
I'll make those changes. We'll have Liz add the line for the assistant.
Yeah, I, I just think it should be... We've got a lot of problems that we didn't normally used to have, and it seems to be getting worse. Well, you're just, the people are just... They're hard to fathom.
Society.
Is there anything else, John, you wanted to...
No, I mean, I'm just learning, I'm learning, you know, as I'm born, it's, it's, you know, I, I, I think it's a fairly decent thing. I mean, the people are very receptive, however, an exceptional one, however, different strokes for different folks, and they can be dealt with, you know. A hard person to deal with and work with for people, but, uh... That's why they have laws, though.
All right, so we'll do that. Now comes the interesting thing, revenue discussion.
Like, I think Jay brought it up early, we were talking about the West Haven increase. And maybe this is just my perception, but I, I don't know if towns, all towns talk about revenue enough. For as long as I've sat, going back to when I was a volunteer in Maryland, up till today, we always seem to talk about how we're gonna cut the budget, and, and we need to save some money. So, I thought it'd be a good idea to just maybe get out in front of it and talk about revenue. So, I guess that, that's all I have for that right now. If the board had ideas you wanted me to implement or research, I guess that'd be a way to start too.
It's, you're, you're talking, the committee is looking for the, they're, they're gonna be kicking, from the revenue committee's side, kicking ideas, and you wanna know if we as the board have some ideas, we wanna throw over the fence for you to take back to your committee?
I think that'd probably be helpful, and, but I know there was a lot of great ideas last night from the public.
The more the merrier.
Hopefully, we could get the, some of them compiled, and we can go from there.
What, my, I, I don't, at, at this point, I don't have any additional ideas, a, a comment that when, I, I'd like to see when the committee gets something together and comes back to talk to the full board, it would be helpful for me if you, it's, it's somehow listed, here's the idea, here's, here's what it may, you know, the, the cost benefit analysis, it says this is what it's gonna cost us, and even if it's the, it's the best guess you can have, here's what we would anticipate the revenue to be, so, so I could get, for example, selling wa, uh, selling water is going to bring in, because based on what we've seen and what we've sold, it's twenty thousand a year, and it's gonna cost, whatever, I'm, I'm using different numbers, but if it's twenty here, fifteen there, thirty there, uh, I, it, it gets me an idea of where, of where we are. Of, so you can do some kind of a analysis that may help us when we think of prioritizing which one, if we wanna tackle some, which ones would we want? The ones that are gonna bring us, cost us the least and bring us the most money back in, is, is what my stingy nature would be, but, but there'd be a lot of, I'm sure there's gonna be some great ideas, my...
Well, I think most, most of the things that were talked about last night were pretty much just some basic fees here and there that would, it's not gonna cost anything to implement them, but they're gonna bring in a little bit of money.
Yeah.
I mean, we haven't hit the gold mine yet, here, anywhere, but...
You, you take care of the dollars, uh...
Did you ever look into anything on that CO2 sequester, sequesterization?
Uh, you know what, I sent, I did, I sent an email to somebody, I'm gonna say somebody at the state, to be vague. What they sent back was that our, our land, our properties weren't large enough.
Well, that's not true. That, I mean, here's, that, I heard, I heard this on the radio, so it, it was, VPR, it was a national story about a, a park, a, a park in the middle of Seattle. So, it's not a large thing, it's just a wooded park. They're collecting a million dollars a year, selling the sequesterization funds. We got a lot of trees, you know, we got a hundred and fifty acres up in the North Woods, uh, that, that goes through transition in, in logging and stuff like that, but it's still, there's, there's always X amount of acreage of trees there. And it may not be, it may not be the state that we have to ask, it may be the feds and... I, I, I mean, I don't, I just, I don't know, maybe call Seattle.
Oh, you know?
You know, and see what they did, and see where, what, if we're, we're barking up the wrong tree, but it, it just seems like a natural for the state of Vermont in general, and sure is, you know, if they even could cop a that kind of income, then you would have your...
So, what's this, what's this entail, Bob?
Well, you, you essentially sell, you sell the amount of, of carbon CO2 that, that the trees in, in a certain area collect. You let somebody rent that, they can show that as, as a, that they are maintaining this, this particular part of the, of the area, the, you know, the acreage, and they get to use that as, as a carbon reduction for their business. So, you sell it to them, essentially, you're leasing them the trees. You know, they don't, they don't have any ownership, except that they're claiming that sequesterization or anything.
But if you do something like that, can you go back and unlock? You probably wouldn't have to.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know enough about it, but it, it just sounded way too simple to be, you know, it sounded like one of those things, but, but the city of Seattle is doing. And I, I don't know what would be different for us, and it's a pretty loosey goosey thing, from what the description of it was. It was just, you know, like I said, it's way too good to be true, but, but they're doing it, and they're collecting on this small park in the, in the, in the city of Seattle, it's not outskirts. We've got a lot of outskirts, and we've got this park here that, that has a lot of trees, and...
Need more.
Yeah, and, but I mean, if it's, if there's something doable about that...
They'll poke around again.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And it's free to ask.
The state of Vermont, you know, as, as liberal as Heathen should is, I think they're way too conservative, so, and in terms of what they do for, you know, for, for revenue, so...
You could sell the CO2 to pay for the new trees, to sell more CO2.
To collect more, yeah. I don't know, I don't know if it's possible, but that's one thing that, that I would love to find out.
Well, I was just thinking, are you thinking as a revenue committee that once you look at these projects and some money that you can get from revenue, were you looking that it would go to the general fund to help bring the overall tax, or were you looking, for example, year Mark Somner says this is for infrastructure improvement, or, you know how we struggle with paving? And having to either ask for appropriation or everything else? Do you, do you look at someone and say, this is so, this is gonna be earmarked for paving?
I think that's up to us.
To decide.
When, when that's all said and done, we're just trying to get ideas and...
You're just gonna get the money and you're, you're not looking for...
I'm not sure we're getting the money, we're just getting ideas that we can put forward to act on. Am I, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
It's just a brainstorming, but whatever you guys...
Absolutely.
Whatever you come up with is, is just another brain thinking about it, it doesn't hurt.
Because I, I look at the whole idea behind revenue is, the whole goal is to manage to keep it's, our, the amount of monies we have to raise through taxes down as low as we possibly can.
That's correct.
I mean, it's not, it's not any greater...
And get as much as we can for our dollar bill.
Okay, perfect.
So, one thing I could do that I, we probably should get the ball rolling on is the West Haven.
Yes.
Contract is...
We should notify them if we're gonna do something, because they're making their budgets.
That's, I figure now would be the time, so if the board wanted to, to set a dollar amount, I could send them a letter and...
Where are we now?
If I remember correctly, we talked about this before, we were talking twenty-five.
Was it twenty-five?
I believe so.
Oh, where's that at?
But they haven't had an increase that I can remember.
Not since I've been in the board in nine, ten.
We ever increased outside of the town with one of those payments like that was, uh...
Farther.
And then they went, whoop.
Did their own.
Did their own, so...
West Haven is paying sixteen thousand currently.
Right, and I, as Jay was in, I thought we were gonna ask them to pay twenty-five thousand.
That in this pamphlet air?
They're sixteen thousand now, sixteen, even if we jumped it to twenty, that's a four thousand dollar raise. And that's still pretty cheap, very cheap.
You know, what might be worthwhile is to do some crunching, I don't know how, you know, how to, how, how to even tell you how to do that. What, what a West Haven, the only way I guess you could do is do a per capita figure, I mean, what each, however many people are in West Haven, how many people are in Fair Haven, divide it by the total budget, and see where they're, see where they're at.
The same way that they do the, the, um...
The rescue squad came up with that.
Yeah, yeah, do it the same way they...
Per cap, per capita.
I could, so I could take the sixteen thousand divided by population, that would give you a per capita number for that number. At least then you'd know what they're paying now, and then you could add or subtract per capita.
You could do that for the whole, for everybody in both towns, get a, get a basic figure, right?
Exactly.
You know, just a basic figure, it costs us X amount of dollars to run a hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck.
Per person.
So, we're not, so that, you know, somebody doesn't show up here that can count and say, wait a minute, we're already paying too much, you know, so, let's make sure we're not, we're not overcharging them, I don't think we are, by any stretch of the imagination, but, but I, it, let's not, let's not step ourselves...
They couldn't set something up for that kind of money.
No, no.
And they tried one time, many years ago, about renting dumpsters and having them, and they couldn't, it just didn't work out. It was too expensive, and, so...
So, do they buy a car, a ticket, just like us?
They get a dump sticker just like us, they get a...
Is it same, same sticker as ours?
Same sticker, same...
Yeah, so you can't tell, you couldn't tell the difference.
Should it be, should it be a different sticker?
A non-resident rate, you'd be charging twenty bucks a sticker.
Instead of it, yeah.
Personally...
Non-res is the way to go with these.
Personally, I think the color they got on them sure suck.
I was wearing my purple shirt that day, and she's like, what color should we choose?
Looks black anyway.
Yeah, no, it's an awful color. It was a bad choice.
I think we should really, we really should, um, they should really get on them guys down there and start checking them.
They've been doing better, we've had a lot more people come in buying stickers.
I know, but I, you don't ever see anybody go out and check them to see if there's a sticker.
You know, one of the things that they did at Castleton at one, at one point, um, was they had the stickers had to go on the back of the truck.
Back window.
Back window or the bumper, whatever, so, so when you're backing up, you can see it.
That trouble is with the back window, everyone's usually now got colored tint on them.
Tint, yeah, yeah.
Most people just...
You can't see the purpose of showing it, and they're gonna see the back of the truck.
So, just, um, so I'm clear, what we're talking with West Haven though is going from sixteen thousand to twenty thousand, that's what the, the municipality pays.
Right.
And because transfer station is the sticker, and right now, it's, it's residents of West Haven pay the same amount for the sticker, just like the punch card, they say they pay the same amount.
What you're wanting is, the reason why I feel it should be the same is because the town of West Haven is paying for the use of the dump, of the transfer station, and their residents, I mean, I don't know, I know they don't pay, that's why if we went per capita...
I was, I was gonna say that...
It'd be more fair, everybody would be the, the per capita.
That's why I look at the sixteen thousand, I'm saying, that is an amazing deal, and I'm, I wouldn't feel guilty charging them twenty-five thousand, quite frankly, because they couldn't even think about putting a dumpster roll off.
Just have Joe and the chairman of the board up there get together and, you know, and hash stuff around a little bit, because it's gotta go up. There's no questions about it, it's gotta go up.
Everything's going up, everything.
I'll, I'll pull some rates and, and bring some options.
Yeah, and see what, see what the, I mean, I, I, it would be interesting to me just to find out what it costs, check per person in both towns.
I think Castleton does that with Hubbard.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, you might be able to get some kind of an idea from that.
Oh, check right.
Yeah.
All right, enough revenue talk for preliminary.
Yes, thank you, it gives me direction.
What's happening round town?
Couple of things, so we'll see the December 17th, that must be this weekend. Live activity is at the park again, 6:00 PM.
What is it?
The live nativity.
Oh, live?
Yep. The lighting, the, so the competition for light decorations on our houses. That judging takes place December 19th, so it was the next week. And then the winner will be emailed on 12/23, which is a $500 cash prize. So, for, for those interested in, who are a part of that. And then January 15th, just to keep reminding everybody, there is the talk about the, there is a talk concerning the Red House, January 15th at 2:00 PM at the Legion.
History of the Red House.
History of the Red House. Famous Red House, I heard.
Can you put in out of town stuff?
Like what? Is the Legion doing something?
Like an Elvis concert?
Yeah, what's going on with Elvis?
28th of January at Castleton Legion.
January 28th at the Castleton Legion.
Elvis from, from Branson.
Oh, is he?
Yeah.
A kid? Kid, well, how old is he now?
24. I got all the posters today.
It's an Elvis concert?
Yeah, well, it's, you can't say Elvis concert, it's a tribute to the king.
Tribute, Elvis tribute.
What time's it start?
7:00.
7:00 PM.
Kid's good.
I've, I've heard about this guy.
I've got tickets, if anyone wants to buy them.
I knew him when he was a kid.
You did what?
I knew him when he was a kid, he used to come to Jay and Lorraine's Memorial Day.
And sing at their.
And sing.
Elvis did?
Yeah, this kid did, yeah, Floyd did.
Well, he looked like Elvis.
You mean the Elvis tribute?
Yeah, he was 12, but. He's good. Okay. Uh, parking lot. Is there anything about that zoning grant?
No, you know what, no word, but I'll reach out to them instead of. We've been waiting and waiting for that.
All the changes are done, then I think we're, unless the board has someone they see that, what's there, they can add. Just waiting to get it formatted and all the same. Anything else? Any questions on anything else? Okay, board roundtable. Okay, we got a couple of things there. Simple stuff, I think, except for a price tag. I've mentioned sidewalks two or three times in the past, I said I was gonna try to designate a couple of streets that were, that probably suited the best. I've been asking some walkers and some different people that I've talked to. Seems like Grape Street and Prospect Street probably the two starters as far as sidewalks. And then I done some research on them, preliminary research on buildings. I'm still waiting for a price on a metal building. We started out with a building 60 wide, 120 foot long, 14 foot overhead doors, 14 by 14. I've done the concrete estimates on it. 200 yards of concrete for that building, six inch slab, four foot frost walls, two foot footers. I was figuring $500 a yard, but I've been told that's, I'm under, way under. I'm told, I'm told I should figure between 650 and 700 a yard. That brings the total to $135,000 just for concrete. I have not got the price on the building yet. To insulate that properly with blue board, it's another $17,000, just to give you an idea where we're at right now. And that's before any prep work is done for subsoil, grading, drainage, power, water. So, I don't know, it's scary.
Where would that be? Where?
Where, wherever you, I don't think we decided where, but we haven't got a where.
We haven't got a where yet. We're just trying to get some pricing. We're still at the Hall part. So, more to come. And that's all I have.
Thanks for doing that, that's a lot of work in itself.
No, I don't have anything because I don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings.
Thank you, I'm sensitive.
Not just you.
I'm actually good too. Financial report.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve payroll for $33,078.24.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the warrants for $282,699.63.
Second?
I'll second it.
Wanna read some of the specifics on that? There are some fairly decent numbers there.
There should be a post-it on the front with the, with the big hitters, that's a little larger usually.
Uh, library, oh, okay, some of the, some of the payments for the quarter, half year, is that what that is? Half year payment and?
Quarter.
Quarter?
Uh, it's the second quarter, yeah, so it's a half year.
So, library's 22, rescue squad's 32, workman's comp. Yeah, 32 itself, 32, 125, and the town hall repair for $30,000. Just for specifics. Anybody got that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And the checkbook status is $1,023,599.61.
And I'll entertain a motion to go in executive session.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session for personnel, attorney-client communication under 1 VSA 313A1 and under personnel, 1 VSA 313A3.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?